Okay, this time here I'd like to call the Town's zoning board a review and session. This time I'd also like to point out the fire exits are to your rear, these two exits to my rear take you into the building. So the only two fire exits are to your rear. I'd also like to point out that the application, Mr. Reptakis has been withdrawn, so if anybody's here for that application, the application of Mr. Reptakis has been withdrawn. And underneath the agenda for tonight, I would like to move Mr. Reptakis' application up forward, since that has already been approved, and that's just to continue. Okay, at this time here, I'd like to have the tenets taken.
Bob Crowe.
Yeah.
Denise DeGrave.
Here.
Jenny Susie.
Here.
Keith Kudier.
Here.
John O'Quinn.
Here.
Russ Lockley.
Here.
Okay, with the record reflected, we have a full board. Also, do we have approval for the minutes of last month's meeting? Motion.
Second vote.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Ayes, have it. Okay, we have the ratifications of decisions from last month. Okay, we have Shavadio on Quinnbrook Lane was requesting a dimensional variance for road fries for construction of the new home. That was approved by all the members with conditions. Do I have a...
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to ratify that decision.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have motion made to ratify and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Ayes, have it. Okay, the next one was Stephen Shippey, 755 Taffan Road, application for a special use permit for construction of an addition, used for accessory, family dwelling, and in-law apartment. That application was approved by a four vote, and do I have a motion on the floor to ratify?
I don't think that motion, Mr. Chairman, is to grant by that. Does he second the motion?
Okay, motion is made, seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Ayes, have it. Okay, whole business. As I explained, we have Reptakis withdrawing our application. We did hear Toronto, 8 Canyon Drive, and we continue that to the board to go up and take a look at. I went out there myself, took a look at that, and was not pleased at all. I think that fence in the front yard is very intrusive. I walked around the structure, the backyard apparently was used, they say it's for the dogs in the front, but there's all landmines all over the place. I thought that fence could be moved as presented in the application. It did not belong in the front of the house, but we need to open up for us to move. Anybody else have any comments on this?
I took a ride down there, I took a look at it. It's high, I'll make no bones about that. The fact that the neighbors, both sides, really don't have a problem. Matter of fact, one neighbor was more concerned about leaving the fence up because of fear of the dogs going over the fence. I did not walk behind the house, but to me, the fact that nobody's complaining about it, and the two people that did show up were in favor of it, I'm more inclined to leave it, so that's my feeling.
Yeah, I'm with Russell on that. That was I there. There are limitations as to where they can let the dogs in to run around.
Well, it's not supposed to be easy, so...
I think that, to Russell's point, the neighbors are in favor of the fence staying.
I think that says volumes.
I don't disagree with you, but the reason why it's in front of us is because somebody did bring it up to...
I thought it was... Did somebody bring it up, or you found it?
No, somebody complained, and we went out and investigated, so...
Did that person come and testify against it?
Nobody testified against it.
Nobody talked against it. I know it's not something I'd want in my house, but next to me. And I don't feel that, you know, we're taking any beneficial use of the property away from the individual. The hardship is created by the applicant, and it's not the release necessary. And if we do not grant this variance, it does not create a... You know, the land is still, the house is, as a house, and is still usable. There is no hardship on us. I think the only hardship is that the applicant has to have the facts, to put up the fence, and it's all after the facts.
Well, hardship is she got to take down the fence she has in an erect one, somewhat smaller area inside of the house, that's...
Right, the guy who paid, that would have been the correct way to do it at the beginning. Let's check it off, see what happens.
I agree, but...
Anybody else have any comments on this? Okay, John?
Well, as I said, I mean, if the neighbors were upset about it, they're not here to tell us that. Matter of fact, one, as Russell said, one neighbor wants to keep the fence up because he's concerned with safety of having dogs out there, and there's really not a lot of places to let these dogs run in their yard.
Well, you can put it over to one side, it doesn't have to be in the front yard. If everybody just put the fence up in the front yard, it'd be...
I'm also inclined to...
My neighbors did.
Well, see?
I'm also inclined to put a stipulation that if the time ever is that she nor ever has dogs, that they take the fence down, so it's not, you know, it's not invaluable.
So if you vote with approval, it'd be with a stipulation?
Yes.
Okay. All right, this time here, I'd like to call for a roll call vote on this application.
Excuse me, I would like to suggest that if there is a consideration of approving this, that any stipulations also include expiration upon sale of the property as well as that, so it doesn't carry over to the next order.
Okay, this time I will start the vote with myself. I deny. Jenny, how do you vote?
Deny.
Russ?
Approve with the two stipulations.
Keith?
Will I be voting chair?
Yes, I would, yeah.
Okay. I'm gonna deny, sir.
Okay, John?
I approve of stipulations.
Okay, the application's denied. Okay, new business. No, I'm sorry, we have the one hand, which we never heard.
Yeah, I just wasn't clear, it needs...
Excuse me, I'm...
You didn't vote, so...
Okay.
Because I wasn't here last week.
Okay, can you read into the record, the application, please?
The applicant in order is Travis P. Leclair. The location of property is AP 318 Lot 16271 Hill Farm Road. Zone is village rural commercial. Existing use succinct is three family dwelling. Proposed use sustained. Applicant is seeking a special use permit to legalize existing three-family dwelling unit.
Okay, please give your full name and address.
Travis P. Leclair, 71 Hill Farm Road, Coventry.
Okay, and young lady with you?
Julia Jaganoff.
Turn it on.
Okay, and glass, you're both in the room. Do you swear to tell the whole truth and not but the truth in front of this board?
I do.
Okay. Please present your application.
Is it okay for me to speak?
What are you to the application?
I'm just a friend, but I just feel more comfortable if I spoke, and I've been involved with this property.
Okay. Actually, I need the owner of the property to speak, or a legal representative.
Understood. I guess my application was that the property is approved through the town as a three-to-five family, but through the zoning board it says it is a two-family, and there are three existing apartments in it, and I was just requesting that it would be approved on paper as a three-family with no modifications other than the paperwork.
Okay, you have here, three family, you and you believe. You are paying taxes on what do you have for evidence? Did you bring anything in? Did you bring when you purchased it, was it a three-family? I need something to support, it's not a delay or a dislocation. I need something to support the evidence of a three-family.
Understood. So I had no supporting paperwork?
Oh, but your taxes. Paying taxes every year.
Well, I don't have it in my pocket.
Brian, do you have the...
I researched the property, I found no approvals that I could find showing that this was anything more than a two-family.
Okay, so they're paying taxes now on a two-family?
What the tax assessor does and what zoning approvals do are two different things. If the tax assessor goes out and finds five units, they're gonna tax it as five units, whether they're legal or not legal.
Right, but I kind of, if a person's paying taxes on three units, and because the zoning board and the tax assessor don't talk together, that's not the individual's.
No, that's not the way it works.
I know that's not the way it works, but that the common layman wouldn't know any difference, is what I'm saying.
This property, I could find no indication in any tax record or anywhere that this was anything other than a two-family.
Okay.
I do have supporting paperwork, I am completely unprepared.
All right, do we wish to continue this?
Can I ask, yes, can I ask, how long ago did you purchase this property?
Approximately five years.
And when you bought it, it was a three?
Correct. And well, the fire department came out and put in all the...
So your paperwork, I'm assuming, so we can continue this, so if you come back, you can show me, for instance, to show us the bill of sale, saying that this was that, I mean, I'm not necessarily gonna guarantee anything, but it's got, like the chairman says, we've got something to go on.
Yes, sir, I do have the paperwork that, it says on the tax roll, it's taxed as a three-family. I have the paperwork from the Central Coventry Fire Department that says it's approved for three-family as far as fire safety, and I do have supporting documents, I just didn't have them.
Okay, the vice chair has brought to my attention that she does have a copy of your tax rule, and it is being taxed, I'm gonna take a look at it, if my understanding is incorrect, as a three-family. Building type two, three-family, pullback. Also, valuation, don't know what year this is, and they got a two-to-five zone, which doesn't make any sense.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
The tax assessor's rule is solely for the purpose of determining value with assessment purposes, you cannot rely on it for legal purposes.
Okay, well...
The acreage, all of that is not reliable, it's standard...
But that's what the individual's paying.
That's fine, and he has a right to contest it if he doesn't think it's right, but it is not evidence that you can rely on.
But why would he think it's wrong when that's what he's got?
You know what? How did you buy this property? Didn't you buy it out of foreclosure?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so it's his job when he buys the property...
Okay, I need your closing statement.
Understood.
To research the property, I mean, most lenders now, when they borrow, when you borrow money to buy a house, buy a zoning certificate. If you are buying it as an investment property, they make you go to the zoning official and get a certificate that it is legally permitted for the use that you intend. It's his job to research whether or not it's really a three-family, not ours. But then we, you know...
Do you have any building permits?
Negative.
When you purchased, it was open.
When we purchased, when I purchased the property, I obtained one building permit to put a roof on it, and to have electrical work done.
Okay, now Brian, you have...
Mr. Chairman, I have correspondence here.
Microphone.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I have correspondence here dated September 29, 2003, signed by Vivania Sorengatino, the assistant planner, advising his predecessor entitled Mr. Del Deo that it's a zoning compliance certificate. At your request, the Coventry tax assessor's records have been reviewed regarding the property located this property. Please be advised that this property has been used as a two-family residence as far back as 1968. Therefore, the two-family use is considered a legal non-conforming use in RR2 zone. So, back in 2003, it was a two-family, and that, so I don't think it's gonna say...
But is this a VRC zone? It's in RR2. Are all three units occupied right now?
It's VRC, it used to be RR2.
Okay, so it's not occupied right now?
Two rooms per VR.
Okay, so, okay, and who are they occupied by?
A person named Jim Hamar and Clayton McLeire.
Are they paying rent, or are they...
Yes, they are.
About when it was revalued, revaluated? Do you have a paper on that? When they come around every 10 years of revaluation? Don't say anything on that?
It said, yes, in that paperwork said approved two-to-five family.
Well, just any clarifications, because they're asking for relief for Article 6, Table 6, line 5, which is multi-family dwelling. They really should be asking for relief on 6, which is taking of borders or the renting of rooms, correct? This is not a multi-family, this is a rental unit.
No, this is multi-family.
No.
But they're charging rent.
That's what, they're charging for a multi-family.
Does that mean they're taking in borders or renting rooms?
No, no.
No, they're separate dwelling units, meaning they have bathroom and kitchen associate, and renting a room is just like renting a bedroom in a house.
Okay.
How are the utilities divided up? How many electric meters are there?
There are two electric meters.
So how are the...
One electric meter is for one apartment, and then there is one electric meter that runs the other two, and electricity is included in those two units.
Okay, how about sewers? Do you have a new sewer system for three units, or just...
It's an approved three, it is approved, it was updated within the last two years, but it was all approved for three units for the usage.
Okay, you got state certificates for that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, what I'm gonna ask you to do, if the board agrees, to come up with that paperwork, the state system. As far as I understand, right now, this is my understanding, we do have, by that letter, two units, okay? As the third, you have to determine that by any other information you can submit to the board.
Understood.
At this time, at this time right here, and I think that the board would wish to continue this to next month, too, and we can provide this information.
Just one more question. If this is not granted, what's the hardship that will occur as not being granted?
It would be rental loss and potential sale loss on the event of the sale of the property.
I would just point out for the board, as the solicitor just read, the predecessor entitled here was notified in 2003 that this was a legal nonconforming for two units. Sometime between 2003 and now, a third unit was added illegally. Two- and three-unit uses in the VRC are prohibited. There's no special use permit for it, there's no approval for it. This third unit was added illegally. There was no application, there was no approval, and even if they did apply, it would have had to been rejected because it's prohibited under the zoning rule.
Okay, well, I...
And it was prohibited all the way back to 1981, when this was originally an RR2 zone.
Brian, can you just tell me where you're referencing that in the zoning ordinance, about some of the table?
But my biggest complaint is, it was an RR2. When did it change to, what do you say?
It's in my staff report. The VRC zone was created in 2000. Prior to that, it was RR2. Both as VRC and RR2, two- and multiple-family dwellings are prohibited uses. So they had the two-family as legal nonconforming.
But VRC says, Table 6-1, multi-family dwelling is permitted with special use. That's why you had to refer to someplace else in the ordinance.
And when did you purchase this?
So you know what the zoning was in 2013 when you purchased it?
Look up, Brian, Table 6-1.
Yeah, all right, I apologize.
So it is permitted with special use.
All right, so there's no approval on record for that third unit?
Thank you. Since you purchased, did you, did you indeed change it from a two?
Negative.
So you bought it, it was already a three?
I purchased it with three individual complete units.
Just wanted that on the record, thank you.
Okay, can you bring that documentation to us next month?
Yes, sir.
If the board wishes to continue this. Anybody else have any discussion on this?
How was that marketed, as a two or three family?
It was marketed as a three family to me.
Right, okay, thank you.
Okay, bring in any information you have. Okay, would the board approve to continue this to next month?
So, yes.
Second.
Okay, motion made, seconded, all.
And one other thing, meet with the planning department, just make sure that you got what we need, so it's not, we're all on the same page. You know, you could bring in stuff that could be critical and stuff that you might think not, and, you know, somebody could certainly give you a list of things that would work, if you will, on your behalf.
Understood.
Okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, how do we vote on this application? All those say aye to approve?
Aye.
Continue this, nays? Okay, the application will be continued to next month.
Thank you.
Okay, next application is, I think, new business. I'm gonna have Mr. Patraca please
I didn't think it was gonna come.
I need to run away, Anthony.
Mr. Patraca, I ask you to give your full name and address.
Anthony Patraca, 2675 Flat River Road.
Okay, raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the whole truth and not to butt the truth on this board?
I do.
Okay, you're just here, and I thank you for your time and service on this board. What age is he, 30?
35.
35.
My pleasure.
Very much.
That's awesome.
Let's see now, you're just here to extend the application where you're already permitting, is that correct?
That's correct.
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, it's my, what happened, why was the delay, what happened? Why, what's the delay? Why hasn't it been done yet?
Permitting, just tonight, a couple.
Okay, 'cause I know, it's a good plan, we all like...
Welcome to the small business world.
Yeah, good. But still on track, you still on, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so at this time here, with no further questions?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we grant the six-month extension.
Second.
On this application.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Nays? Ayes, have it. Thank you, Mr. Patraca.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay, my next one's gonna be Sullivan.
The next application is order applicant Alicia and Joshua Sylvane. The location is AP 315 Lot 49, 5837 Flat River Road. Zone is RR5. Existing use, single-family residence. Proposed use sustained with in-law. Applicant seeks a special use permit to build a 24-by-24 addition for an in-law apartment.
Okay, I'm gonna ask you to give your full name and address, please.
Alicia Sylvane, 5837 Flat River Road, Rainor Island, O2 East.
Sir?
Joshua Sylvane, 5837 Flat River Road.
Okay, I'm gonna ask you, raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the whole truth and not to butt the truth in front of this board?
I do.
Okay, explain to me what you want to do.
So, my parents are getting older, and my dad, my dad had some heart problems, he had fistitis, but he had cancer. They live in Florida, probably six, eight months out of the year, and when they come home, he's doing better, but, you know, I'm an only child, so we were hoping that he would allow us to add an in-law apartment, so they could stay with us when they come home, and if I have to take them to the doctors and things like that. But they're not here that often, it's, mostly it would be three months tops out of the year they would be here.
Okay, now I'm looking through here, have you submitted a set of plans?
I did, sir, yeah. And on it, I put a couple of notes, where the new, where the, if you permit it, where the addition would be versus our house originally. See, my dad did the plans with the contractor, and I wasn't, I wasn't there for it, so when I finally got involved in it, we decided, because they're gonna be living, you know, if they can live with us, we're not gonna have a door between our apartment, house, and it's just gonna be open, so, you know, we're gonna just walk back and forth. And also in the back, where they're gonna have a little, there will be no, there's stairs to get in the house from outside, but there's no rear stairs. It says rear stairs, but there wouldn't be any rear
Okay, I'm gonna have to take a look at it, but my GPS has you way up in the back. Right on the road, now that moves it. I'm gonna buy a house, they didn't have like a big garage in the front?
That's us.
Oh, that was, okay, so I did have a...
Right past the speed limit sign, that's our house, right there.
Okay, I'm gonna go up and take a look at it.
You have two, a big flagpost.
No, you're gonna put a 24-by-24 additional.
Correct.
Okay, the plans I have here, do you, are not the plans you're gonna use, or these are the plans you're gonna use?
Oh, no, these are the things.
These are the plans you're gonna use.
I was just saying, there should be a little sticky note on a few of them, where it's like there was supposed to be a door, but there wouldn't be a door between my parents' place and my place, it'd be an open access, so we'd just walk through.
So from the dining room on your side to the living dining area on their side, there'll just be an opening?
Yes, correct, yeah, yes.
They'll use the front door, just like?
No, they would have, on the side, the left side of the house, they would have stairs to enter into.
But they could use it from the front?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, they can use whatever they want, of course. When they're older, it gets to Rainor Island, the less they want to come.
There's a lot of us.
Okay, and they're gonna park on the same side you park on, or they're gonna come across the front of the house and park over that side?
Same side.
Are they doing my striving? So how are, how are the stairs, is that gonna be an issue for them, using the stairs?
It shouldn't be, I mean, they go up and down, they're fine on stairs, it's just, that shouldn't be a bad one.
How high are the stairs?
Honestly, sir, I don't know. I can find out, the contractor couldn't come today, and like I said, I wasn't, when, Anthony's the contractor, who, my dad made this up, I wasn't present for it, so I kinda got it after everything was printed out, and I was looking, and that's why I put little sticky notes on it.
I just wanna make sure, whether they can do something unnecessary, just 'cause you thought you had to?
Gotcha.
Make it difficult for them?
Yeah.
So you have a good plan, you're doing what we wanna see, common entrance, and just could pass through to you and sell it back.
Okay.
You have plenty of room in the envelope, Brian, does it have plenty of room within the envelope?
Yes.
To put this addition up?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, after your parents are no longer deciding to live there?
Yes.
You realize you cannot rent this out, you'd have to re-rig to a single family?
Yes, sir.
That would be a required stipulation.
Not our problem, and I can be, and tell my husband this all the time, we lived in, I lived in Cranston for 35 years, I live where my office is, I'm two miles door-to-door. I have about 26 miles from my house to my office. We moved out here to be away from people. We don't want anyone else, of course. Being honest, I mean, I was two miles door-to-door, now I'm 26, so it's a drive every morning, but we, you know, we want privacy.
Okay, any other board members having questions?
What will the length be when it's all done, on the front? I'm trying to find the figures here.
Sure. One second.
Twenty-one plus twenty-two, 45 feet.
What is it?
Forty-five feet.
Put the loop on, too?
Yeah.
It looks a lot bigger than that, it looks huge on here.
It does really, it does look huge, it's, it's not as...
It looks very pretty.
The roof height's gonna be all the same, correct?
Yep.
Yeah, no, don't worry, we're getting to, we're getting in the room, siding, everything will be all.
Yeah, I know on the plane, it looks like two different roof heights, but it's gonna be the same height all the way across.
Never seen any nice ones like that, and it, it works, it's all nice.
Any other questions from the board?
Mr. Chair, I did have one question.
Sure.
Do you have the separate capacity for the extra bedroom?
Yes, because we have, right now, we have a three, we had three bedrooms, we converted to two bedrooms, so if we add on the addition, it'll technically be three bedrooms in the house.
You can provide the paperwork to Mr. Wagner for a state-approved three-bedroom septic system.
I'm, I'm, I'm just, it, it's unusual to see a two-bedroom house, and I, I know that the DEM's definition of a bedroom can be awfully broad, so I just, when you say you eliminated a bedroom, what did you do?
So what we did was, we had three bedrooms, and we took our two bedrooms, and we just took the wall down, and we made it into one bedroom.
Okay, so you removed the wall, okay.
Yeah, the wall's completely gone, and it's completely one large room.
Okay, that satisfies me, a lot of times, people take down their door, you know?
It's not really, you have pictures if you want.
Okay, Mr. Wagner approves that, certain plans I have noted.
I'm okay.
So do they need to provide proof or nothing?
Okay, now, I'm sure you've walked around your property many times. This is, I believe, what you presented, the best location for this addition. It seems like it appears to go along with the structure. I think, what's a rocky in the backyard? Was that, the bed roof in the back, or would I be?
No, it would be.
So you looked, and this is the best location for this?
Yeah, over the, in the, the right side of the house is the septic, so you'd have to move the entire septic system, add it on that side.
We had people come out and check it out to make sure where the best spot is.
Well, you would know better than that.
Right, right.
Okay, I'd like to have a motion that we vote on this tonight?
Um, we want to hear anybody in the audience?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, so I'm gonna have you take a seat, please. Anybody here would like to speak on this application? Against it, have questions, or for the application? Anybody at all would like to speak on this application? Okay, I see there's nobody here to speak on this application whatsoever.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we vote on this application tonight?
Okay, motion made, to vote on it, do we have a second to that?
Second.
Okay, a second. All those who approve, say aye?
Aye.
Not, deny? Do I have anybody? No, no. Okay, at this time here, I'm gonna start with John.
I approve the application as submitted.
Denise?
Approve as submitted.
I approve as submitted. Jenny?
Approve.
Application approved, submitted, thank you very much.
Thanks a lot.
Are there any stipulations, are you gonna add stipulations to that, such as it reverts back to civil family?
Yes, yeah, I'm sorry.
That's actually built into the ordinance right at this point, so it's not necessary to attach to this stipulation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, can I have the next application written to the record?
Next applicant, the honored applicant are Gary and Leanne Burke. Location is AP 323 Lot 19128 Allison Avenue. Zone is RR3, existing use, a single-family residence, propose use sustained. Applicant seeks additional variance to build a 20-by-20 garage with a 24-foot side step-back where 50 is required, and 66-foot rear step-back where 90 is required.
Okay, gonna ask you to give your full name and address for the record, each?
Gary Burke, 28 Allison Avenue.
Ma'am?
Leanne Burke, 28 Allison Avenue.
I'm gonna ask you to raise your right hand. You swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth in front of this board? Okay, please present, or explain to me what you'd like to do.
We currently have a 12-by-16 shed that is in disrepair, so I'd like to remove that shed and build a 20-by-28 garage in its place.
Okay, I took a ride over to your place, and you have an absolutely beautiful location here, you've done an awful lot of work. Looking at the plans you submitted, I would believe you probably picked the best location to be. Did you walk around, I'm sure you did, and you felt that this was the best location?
Yes.
I really, I have no complaints with it whatsoever. Do we have board members having any other?
You don't have to tell us why you need it, those muscles on the car, no. For stuff.
Do you have any questions?
Uh, no, I don't.
John?
So I just wanna understand, so you got knocked down the shed as, in this picture, you knocked that shed down, you wanna build that structure, really? Second floor, and is the second floor for storage, or what's one of them?
Just, yeah, just lawn chairs and all that sort of stuff would be gone.
Okay, and as far as lighting, exterior lighting, it's not pointing away from the structure, it's just lighting the area?
Yep.
Not shining on neighbors? Bad with plumbing?
No.
Just electricity?
Keith, do you have any questions?
No, sir.
Please.
Why can't it go anywhere else on the lot? Why doesn't it have it going this far?
Well, according to zoning, it can't be in the front yard, and that's the only side yard that we have.
What's, the other side there is the water?
The backyard is the water.
See the arch on the top, that's, that's the pond?
Yeah.
So it's pretty much the only place I can go there.
So, I'm just, I'll just picture again, you have that big driveway area?
Yes.
So if you moved it more into the driveway, does that solve the problem, or do we have this wrong angle?
Do you bring it to the front?
Well...
I think John's correct, I think if you wanted to bring it to the front, it could be possible.
Well, we block my other garage doors, though, on the side of my house, yeah.
And you have these garage doors?
Yeah.
So you're gonna have your three garage doors now?
Yes.
You're gonna have another garage?
Yes.
So again, can you just explain the usage for the garage, the extra garage?
Just my tractor, yeah, facility, it's all lawn furniture. Punished a lot of crap over the years, I guess.
Stuff.
Stuff. Sounds nicer.
So, my shed is full, and so I just took it this up a little bit.
How big is it, I think?
The shed is 12 by 16.
Not as big as Rose.
Okay, is there any question, other questions from the board? Okay, I'm gonna ask you to take a seat, please. Anybody here would like to speak on this application? Is there just questions on the application, for or against the application? Okay, I see there's nobody here to speak on the application. Do I have a motion, we vote on this tonight?
So moved.
Motion's made, seconded. All those approve, saying aye?
Aye.
Nays? Ayes have it. Okay, I will do a vote call, do it on this, starting with John?
I'll prove.
You approve as presented? Okay, Denise?
Approve as presented.
I also approve as presented. Jenny? Russ?
Prove.
Prove as presented, okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, that takes care of our applications, old business, new business. Now we have the zoning board of appeals, we will sit now, the zoning board of appeals, does reporting secretary need a break on this? Okay, we shall continue.
I'm going to step aside.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I think you need a motion to adjourn, and then a motion to convene as the zoning board of appeals.
I'll make a motion, will you adjourn?
Okay, do I have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, that's a second, and a motion to adjourn as the county zoning board review. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Nays? Ayes have it. Now we shall reconvene as the county zoning board of appeals. Just for the record, I'll have the secretary do a vote call.
Keith Wood here?
Here.
John Donarco?
Here.
Denise DeGraves?
Here.
Bob Crow?
Here.
Jenny Susi?
Here.
Russ Lockley?
Here.
At this time here, I will ask for clarification from Brian Wagner, the county director?
Mr. Chair, when this matter was last before you on October 17th, I believe we had a pretty much full presentation by both parties at the conclusion of the evening. The board voted to remand the matter to the planning department and to hold the proceedings in abeyance to allow the respondent 30 days to respond and submit a plan to the planning department for mitigation efforts on the shadow flicker. We have not received a plan since October 17th, so nothing has changed since the end of those proceedings to today. I would suggest, you know, we do have one brief rebuttal witness that we would like to call to present in response to some of the testimony presented by WED regarding the Epsilon report, just to clarify, you know, how that report was prepared and what the results indicate to the board, but beyond that, we think that this matter is ready for decision. You have everything you need to have to move forward with a decision.
Okay, you wish you'd bring this individual up?
Yes, Mr. Sur.
Okay, I'm gonna ask you to give your full name and address?
It's Clinton Seer, address is 63 Garfield Street, Quincy, Mass.
And you're here representing who?
The town of Coventry.
The town of Coventry, and you work for who?
Epsilon Associates.
Could you move closer to Mike?
Epsilon Associates is located where?
In Maynard, Massachusetts.
Maynard, Massachusetts, okay.
Could you spell your last name, Kyra, please?
C-Y-R.
Okay, now, and your background is?
I've been with Epsilon for approximately over five years, so I have over five years of experience in wind energy projects. I did go to school for mechanical engineering, concentrated in acoustics. Epsilon has worked on nearly 200 wind, wind energy projects in their history, and I've been involved in over 40 of those. As far as shadow flicker goes, I've been involved in approximately 15 or so projects at Epsilon.
And your formal education is?
Bachelor's of mechanical engineering.
From where?
From University of Hartford, connected.
I'm gonna ask you to raise your right hand. You swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth in front of this board?
I do.
Right, what would you like to present to us at this time, at the planning department?
So I've prepared a few slides, I believe Brian's gone to the first one, jumping into shadow flicker. I'm sure this has already been discussed, but just to explain what shadow flicker is, it's the intermittent change of intensity of light when the wind turbine blade passes by the sun, so it's that interaction there that you'll see typically at the home, shadows are created.
Now, is the shadow flickering only for the interior of the home, or is that for all the property?
I suppose flicker is generally associated with what's inside the home, only because it'll, the shadow will pass by the window and create this flickering effect inside the home, however, the shadow is generated, of course, outside the home as well.
Or is that not considered part of the shadow flicker, like what the shadowing, like on... What, what, the shadow, like on the structure, and the rain, and the wind, or anything that's helping, is that not considered shadow flicker?
I, I suppose it would all be considered.
I can't have suppose.
Mr. Mr. Chair, for, for the purposes of this particular proceeding, uh, the town acknowledges that in terms of regulated shadow flicker, we're talking about flicker inside the home, so that...
That's all we're talking about, inside the home?
Yeah, that, that, that would really be a, a question of how it, it's regulated, uh, and in this particular case, we are concerned about the flicker inside the house.
Okay. All right, continue.
Okay, so, um, my company does a lot of shadow flicker modeling, um, and we use a methodology, um, as, as follows on this slide, uh, we use a software package called Wind Pro, it's, it's a widely accepted software package that, uh, other companies use, um, and the software you put in certain calculation inputs into, uh, such as the actual locations of the wind turbines, uh, the locations of discrete modeling points, uh, homes, for example, or other structures, uh, as well as wind turbine dimensions, which includes the hub height and the rotor diameter, uh, the calculation area, um, which is basically the, the distance that shadow flicker would be calculated out to, uh, as well as terrain information locally around the wind turbines and, and the receptors.
So you put in all the trees and everything else in your calculation, it's not the...
But, by default, we actually exclude all vegetation, so that assumes that the earth is bare, so no...
Okay, that's what I need to know.
Correct. Um, all structures, we, we don't model structures, and there's no vegetation included in the initial modeling.
Okay.
Um, in addition, all receptors or homes are modeled as greenhouses, in which case, uh, we model it as a window that is facing all directions, so we would see shadow flicker from a wind turbine to the northwest, any direction from the home, which, uh, could be conservative, um, assuming there isn't actually a window on every single facet of the home. Um, so, the, the initial calculation in this software is a worst-case calculation, where it assumes that the sun is always shining from sunrise to sunset, and that the wind turbine is constantly spinning. To further refine the model, we incorporate, uh, expected conditions, which are sunshine probabilities, as well as wind direction and wind, uh, speed conditions that are representative of the area. Just to summarize the, the actual modeling that we did for the, the town of Coventry, this model included a total of ten wind turbines, uh, we included a total of nine-hundred-and-eighty-six receptor points that were, that were provided to Epsilon, these were the, the primary structures on, on parcels in the, in the town of Coventry within a, a certain range of the turbines. Uh, we included a calculation distance out to one and a quarter miles from every single wind turbine, and then we also incorporated those sunshine probabilities that I was describing, as well as wind data from, uh, the city of Providence, Rhode Island, which happened to be the closest city with, with publicly available data.
Just on that data, how far back does that data go?
Uh, I, I believe that there's, um, the answer would be twofold, because we have sunshine probabilities, which is from a, a government website, actually, and I believe that, uh, I, I actually don't recall the range off the top of my head, um, but it, it could be back as, as far as nineteen sixty-five.
Okay, so more than ten years?
Possibly. I, I, again, I don't recall.
Okay.
Um, and then the, uh, the wind data, I believe, was more, from a more recent dataset. So, uh, just to summarize the results from the modeling that we did, again, it, we, the report that Epsilon provided does show expected case results, um, and these are annual durations, so we had a total of six-hundred-and-eighty-six of those receptors experiencing no shadow flicker from the wind turbines, um, a total of two-hundred-and-seventy receptors experiencing zero to ten hours per year, um, about twenty-eight receptors experiencing between ten and thirty hours per year, and then there were two receptors, uh, expected to experience over thirty hours of flicker per year, and those durations are, are included on that slide there.
Okay, now, did you do this before they were constructed?
No, this was a post-construction.
So you're post-construction, you never, had any knowledge of, this model was never done before construction or during this?
Uh, Mr. Chair, Epsilon is a consultant that was hired by the town to look into the shadow flicker complaints, um, last year.
And I might be mixed up completely, I thought that they also did a report on, was constructed by the contractor.
Uh, that was a different consultant, that was ESS consultants, there was a consultant who did similar work at that time?
It was the same consultant.
But it was not the same consultant.
Okay, that's what I want to clear, okay. Thank you.
I, I would just like to ask a, a couple of questions, Mr. Chair. At, at our last hearing, um, the respondent WED, WED's experts insisted on referring to your report as a, as a worst-case, uh, analysis. Just to clarify, that is not correct.
That, that is not correct, the results presented in the Epsilon report are expected case values.
So it's, it's a worst-case analysis that's been refined with sunshine and wind data, correct?
That is correct.
Um, now, looking at the current slide that's up there, the, um, site number two-eighty-seven, um, that thirty-seven hour, twenty-eight minute expected case analysis, um, do you know what that number would be under a, a worst-case analysis for that location?
Under worst case, the, the model does give us a worst-case value, um, and I believe it was approximately a hundred-and-thirty-five hours, um, and, and some minutes, uh, worst-case value.
Thank you.
Okay, how about the, uh, case number five eleven, would you do a worst-case on that one?
Worst case was included, I do not have the, the value off the top of my head on that receptor, um, I believe that that particular point in the model was very close, um, practically right under one of the wind turbines, so I believe it, it may be a structure associated with, with the, the wind turbines, if, if not a town structure.
Uh, Mr. Chair, if, if I remember correctly, that's a, a non-residential structure on the Picillo property, so it, it's a structure that came up on their survey, but it's not a residence, and it's actually on the Superfund site.
But everything else is a residence?
That's the monitoring station. Who else?
Okay, well, I'm asking, every, that, everything else is a structure other than that?
Um, I mean, they, they modeled all the structures and, and located them, uh, I guess potentially some of the structures they saw were not residences, um, number two-eighty-seven is a residence, that is Mr. Sullivan's farmhouse, who, Mr. Sullivan testified in, in October.
Okay, that's what I need to know.
Again, back to his expected results, um, I'm just trying to get a gauge on how accurate your expectations are, um, how many reports has Epsilon done of this type nature?
Shadow flicker reports?
Yes. Would shadow flicker reports, they use expected modeling?
Majority of our reports do present expected case values, um, that, um, is typically as requested by our clients, um, and, uh, as I mentioned, I believe previously, I've been involved in, in at least fifteen shadow flicker reports, projects with Epsilon, Epsilon as a whole has, has done more, more.
So, the reports are done, is the study ever done after the fact to go back and measure what actually happened compared to the expected results in the report to see how accurate they are?
Epsilon has not performed that type of study, um, and I, I don't, to my knowledge, there, there's very little to support, uh, that, that type of study, actually.